For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Carol.
Steve Beardsley.
Present.
Isaac Chavez.
Present.
Taylor Crenshaw is absent. John Large.
Present.
Robert Stevens.
Present.
Clarence Worthing.
Present.
Eric Woods is absent.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have two sets of minutes that we need to approve from June the 9th and June 23rd. They're both regular meetings.
Can we do those separately, please?
Okay. Take a motion for the first one on June 9th.
A quick second here. On one of these, I approved the motion and it said Stevens, Isaac, and I'm going to say Isaac Chavez.
It says Stevens Chavez.
Stevens Chavez, yes. Actually.
And the second was Stevens.
Actually, Mr. Stevens, Councilman Stevens found that, and I was going to mention that, so thank you. Well, can we approve that with that correction noted?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Present.
Isaac Chavez. John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, those minutes have been approved with the amendment.
I move approval of June 23rd, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I'm gonna, I think I heard Councilman Chavez on that one.
Okay, roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, were there any public comments? Did I see any? Okay, next on the agenda, we have ordinance number 25-07, and we have a public hearing on that, so I'm gonna recess the council meeting at 7:02 and open a public hearing. Carol, did you wanna say anything to us during the public hearing, or did we have any comments?
This is the additional appropriation that passed first reading at the June 9th meeting. It includes appropriations from sanitation for a tipper attachment for sanitation trunk, truck, and riverboat fund for ADA compliance consultant, and the general fund for unemployment.
Okay, do we have any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:03 and reopen the council meeting. Next on the agenda, we do have ordinance number 25-07, and that's for the additional appropriation ordinance, and this is on second reading.
I make a motion to pass ordinance 2507.
I'll second.
And that's on second reading?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 25-07 passes on second reading. Next, we have ordinance number 25-08, and this is on second reading, and it's an ordinance establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
I make a motion to read ordinance 2508 on the by title only.
It's on second reading.
It's on second reading.
So we just need to approve it?
I make a motion to suspend rules, but not this one.
No.
I make no motion to pass ordinance 2508.
Okay, on second reading.
On second reading.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Nay.
Okay, ordinance number 25-08 passes on second reading. Next, we have ordinance number 25-13, and do we need to read that?
No, that one is Unified Development Ordinance revision, so with those, we just need to approve those so they don't need to be read on first reading or anything like that. It just needs to be approved. The City Plan Commission recommended a favorable recommendation for that.
And this is for 357 North O'Neill Street. And they're changing the zoning from B residential to C residential. So we just need a motion. Did you have something to say on that?
Yeah, let me give you a quick explanation of what's going on. So this property was zoned C residential before the Unified Development Ordinance and the zoning map was created. It was C residential at that time. The business wasn't allowed in a C residential, and the owners came to the BZA and got a special exception to allow that to be in a C residential. And then we changed it from C to B, so now we're trying to get him back to a C residential so the special exception will be properly in place. So that's why it's here in front of you.
We'll have plenty of more of these in the future as we find them, so.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to pass ordinance 2513. Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 25-13 passes. Next, we have ordinance number 25-14, and this is on first reading, so I will need a motion for a read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Additional appropriation ordinance number 25-14.
Do we talk about this one? Yeah, if you'd like to.
This is for, again, unemployment from general fund, and also police overtime, part-time code enforcement, and fuel for the police.
Okay, so this is on first reading, but you can suspend the rules and do.
Well, we can't because did we have a public hearing on this one, Carol?
Oh, shoot, we didn't.
No, we need to have a public hearing on this one at the August meeting.
First reading, no, no.
Thank you.
So we do have to have a.
Yes. So we can only pass this on first reading tonight, and then at the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, and then we can pass it on second.
Now, is this like transferring from one fund to another, or?
These are additional appropriations, and do you have that right there?
Yes. It's for.
They're all in the city general fund. It's for unemployment, police department overtime, the fuel, and the.
Part-time.
Part-time code enforcement. And it's an additional appropriation. The total for those is $81,500.
And this comes out of the general fund?
Yes.
Yes.
I know Chief Shoemaker explained to me, and I understand exactly why, so I don't know if you want to speak on it.
You have any questions first, Scott?
The fuel, we pay out of our paychecks into the general fund for fuel, and the rate is negotiated, I believe, in November after the budget is passed, and so our average fuel bill last year per month was about $9,800. We've only added one vehicle for part-time code enforcement, and we're averaging this year $11,200 for fuel, and I believe that would be all to the cost. And we do require, I believe, anywhere from $25 or $50 per paycheck.
Right.
For employees, and we also require them to add their own fuel for any employment outside of the police department. So the fuel is, we're simply asking for, I think we've, each year, $20,000 to $22,000 that we pay out of our paychecks. We're asking for 15 of that to make it to the end of the year. The part-time code enforcement was something that you approved a few months back. We've been paying that out of overtime and transferring that from overtime, so we're needing an additional, just over $10,000, to make it towards the end of the year. Overtime, because we've transferred $8,000 from part-time code enforcement, we've also had a resignation payout, and when that resignation occurred, it opened a supervisor's position that lasted a few months, and we aim to be a modern police department and have a supervisor on it all the time, so we filled that, those shortages with supervisors, and so that was a large cost. Also, we, you might ask, you know, we are short an officer right now that we're replacing in August, but we have, since 2023, when we came and received the cops grant, we've hired three additional officers on the cops grant. We've not come back to you one time for that match. Our portion of the federal grant, we have paid that out of our own budget, and so I can't transfer money from unspent officer funds. I need that to pay the officers through the match, and so that's why we have not been able to transfer to that, and we should be able to get through the year on that match. I think we're two quarters away from the 2022 grant being fully on the city for next year. And also, we have an officer in training, an officer that's not hired, and then an officer on desk duty for maternity, so we're short three officers right now, and we're spending a little bit overtime for shifts. Also, July 4th, save time at the park. It was an expensive day. Prairie Creek Park, concerts, parades, you name it. And then we just approved two more events today at the Board of Works meeting, and so with the hot dog festival coming up, Halloween, and a Christmas parade, I would hope that this is more than enough to get us through the end of the year, and we'll return whatever is not spent.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2514.
I'll second that.
On first reading.
First.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 25-14 passes on first reading, and so our next meeting will come up, public hearing and second reading. Next on the agenda, we have ordinance number 25-15, and this is on first reading, so I'll need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Ordinance 25-15, and ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 25-06, employees of the civil city of Frankfurt, Indiana. Do you want me to talk about this?
Yeah, you want to talk about that.
So this change, there's only one change in this document. It is for an additional bump to the code enforcement supervisor of $2,000. I also included the job description, which was changed in February through Board of Works because it included many additional duties due to the supervisor role. Chief Shoemaker has requested this change.
We're asking for the raise for code enforcement for the position is now, we have added the part-timer, and when we, in February, when we realized there was a lot of issues with code enforcement in terms of us following up on that, and now we have a dedicated supervisor to make sure that reports are getting done, cleanups are happening, tickets are being processed through the court, and this employee has also trained these new people, and is working a lot more to ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to do, and so I'm asking for the raise. We will fund the raise. We will transfer money from our longevity account for this year. We're not asking for an additional. We have the money within our budget to make this happen.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I know they have been real busy, code enforcement.
They have been very busy, yep.
That's enough. It's a tough job.
It is. It's a really tough job. This ordinance can be passed on first and second, but we have to suspend the rules if we want to do that, so whichever way you would like to do.
Is there a need for it to get done quickly?
I've asked that it be retroactive to February, so whatever.
Whether it's now or next.
Whether it's now or next month, I would.
I generally don't want to suspend rules when there's not a real need to. The rules are there for a reason. Yep.
Okay.
In case somebody does have something in the community, I'd just rather. I agree. I agree. And if there was a reason, like, okay, no, we gotta get it for this payroll, that's one thing, but let's just go through normal course.
Okay.
I make a motion to pass ordinance 2515 on first reading.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 25-15 passes on first reading. Next, we have ordinance number 25-16. Is this on?
This is new.
New, first, okay. So Kimberly, are you prepared to talk about that this evening for us?
We need a motion to read by title only first.
If you want to, yes.
Let's go ahead and move that we read by title only.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Common Council, City of Frankfurt, Indiana, ordinance number 25-16, an ordinance to adopt an EV charging plan for the city of Frankfurt, Indiana.
So Kimberly's been working really hard on this, and we've talked with different companies along with different cities, and there's been a lot of research put into this. So Kimberly, do you want to talk to us about that?
Yes, so over the last, I don't know, year, I've learned more about EV chargers than I ever thought I would. The ordinance was put together with Alicia and I. This is based off a company that we've been working with, Electron Chargers. They're based out of Zionsville in Indianapolis, and what we're looking for is to replace and actually charge the consumer to charge their vehicle, as opposed to what is right now open to the public. And this is something that the company would actually take care of all the credit card fees, those type of things, and then would give Carol a check either monthly or quarterly, however we decide, or however Carol decides to set that up. So it's something that we felt that is a need to update and, at the same time, get a return on investment. Right now, I don't know what that looks like because I just, based off of whatever our utility bills are, in this way, we would be bringing money back into the city when someone charges. There's also a idle fee per minute after the first 15 minutes of the grace period, so that way we get vehicles moving and they're not sitting and just either plugged in or just sitting in the wrong space. There would be two on Clinton Street, close to the creek, and then one on Jackson Street. Those are the places that we have them currently, so happy to kind of answer any questions.
I've talked to several people that have electronic vehicles, and this is real similar to what they face when they go in other communities, so this is an expected thing from owners of these vehicles. Two things. First is, Chief, do you see a lot of additional enforcement hours or anything out of this? Okay, and the other thing, and gee, we specifically say three places. If this is something good, I would assume that we're gonna want to add more, so can we have a generic that maybe the Board of Works can approve additional ones instead of having to come back and amend this ordinance every time we add one?
So the challenge is that, we could probably do that, yes. The reason I put it in that way was because we do have a provision in there that if there's a space that is marked in this ordinance, that code enforcement can ticket them, so if I park there without an electric vehicle, I can get a parking ticket for parking there. So the more specific we are, the better, but I could put language in there that says that as long as it has the electric vehicle parking sign, that that would be able to be enforced via code enforcement. Instead of specific locations.
What do you think about having that additional spots can be approved by the Board of Works?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think that allows for growth of the system.
Yeah, we can do that. That's no problem.
I'd like to do that if we can. Is that something we can do on here and still vote on it tonight?
Yeah, let me come up with language.
Okay. I figured that would be the case.
Just give her a second.
Who puts these in if we decide to have more? I know there's three in there. I understand. Who puts us in, and do we service these, or do they put them in, or how's that work?
So Electron Charger is the company that has the charging stations. Zimmerman, I believe, I'll have to go back and look, is the electrician that actually hooks up to our infrastructure. But there's a maintenance fee, but it comes out of our fee that goes to Carol every month, or quarterly, whatever that looks like. It's around, they said it's around $1,000 a year. There's a backend to this, so I know, Steve, you talked about growth, and if we need more of these, they actually have data on the backend, so we'll know, not the person that's driving, but we'll know what type of vehicle, how long they charged, so it kind of gives you graphs and data to kind of move forward if you want to have potentially more in the city.
Yeah.
And we are putting them where the ones currently are, so we're using the infrastructure that's already there, so.
But just go ahead and give us the ability to grow.
Yep.
But at the same time, the city's not paying to charge people's cars.
Right.
Exactly, which is.
Yeah.
Right now, we are.
Yep.
It originally, I believe, was put in as an economic development tool, you know, thinking that we would attract people here, and that's, times have changed a little bit. We have a lot more people with electric vehicles.
People that drive to Frankfurt to work, and they don't bother charging at home because they know they can get it for free.
Yeah, yeah, so it was, you know, when it was first, and those that are currently there were purchased by the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay.
And we have the money set aside for that.
Yes.
We've already encumbered that money from last year to replace those.
I'd like to think how much we'd pay every year for the charging.
It's in with our light, with the streetlights, so I'm not sure the exact, I'll be able to once I have the backend of this, to be able to see what water just coming in versus what's going out, so I'll be able to know a little bit more.
Well, this is the one I was thinking of earlier, why I had to like to suspend the rules and pass on first and second, get this done right away. This, I'll go ahead and make that motion and see if it goes.
We need.
Hold on.
She's still running.
She's running it right now.
I'm working on it. No pressure.
Tony, what is there to do and get it done in one?
I'd like to get it done sooner so the city's not paying for people's charged cars.
And we need, how long would it take us once we tell them? Did they give you a project?
It's usually a couple weeks lead time, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
They just put a meter on the bunch we have now.
I'll tell you what to say. Yeah, you can use a QR code and it scans it and it'll probably pay.
Thank you.
I understand, okay.
Okay, so my additions in letter G, adding the word initial before the charging stations, so it would be initial charging stations shall be located at the following locations, and then we'll leave the locations in there. And then in H, adding any future charging stations shall be designated by green painting and an EV logo painted inside the parking space, and shall have a charging station pedestal located at the space. And then adding before letter I, so I would turn to J, J would turn to K, K would turn to L. I would say, the City of Frankfurt Board of Public Works and Safety may approve the implementation of any additional stations as it deems appropriate. Any future stations shall be enforced as provided herein.
Sound good?
That's what I was gonna say.
So what we need is. One of two ways, correct? We can either do suspend for second, or we can do this as amended. Do we have to say that, or no?
We don't have to do it as amended, since I've got the language.
Okay, since you already got it, okay.
We can go for it without amending it, and we could do it on first and second if you so choose.
The motion still stands.
Okay, what'd you say?
Motion to pass this on first and second reading.
Pass it on first and second.
Yep.
You mean suspend the rules first?
Yeah. So the motion is to suspend the rules.
First and second.
And we have a first, we have the motion, so we need a second, right?
Yes.
I'll second.
Ready for roll call?
Yes, ready for roll call.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 25-16 passes on first.
Nope, that was just suspended rules. Now we gotta, now we gotta.
Okay, let's pass it.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance 2516.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna do that.
I'll second it.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
It's normally not as entertaining.
Ready?
Yes.
Steve Beardsley.
Aye.
Isaac Chavez.
Aye.
John Large.
Aye.
Robert Stevens.
Aye.
Clarence Worthing.
Aye.
Okay, now, ordinance 25-16 passes on first and second reading. Thank you. Okay, do we have any old business? Okay, under new business, I would like to have the discussion on the data center and information that Lish is going to be able to provide us with some of that information. A lot of things have happened very quickly, and a lot of things are going on on social media, but I think that it needs to be explained to the council exactly. There is a process that has to take place, and it has not. All these things have not happened yet, so everything's in the middle of a process.
So this is just for your information. All of these things would have to be approved by the appropriate boards, including yourselves and the City Plan Commission. The data center project that is being proposed, they requested that they, they are working on a petition for voluntary annexation. We don't have that before you tonight because we are waiting on a fiscal plan before it can come before the council, but they have also asked for a rezone in connection with the annexation. I did some research. We can do that, but there has to be a specific process that has to be followed in order to do that. The first part of the process is the City Plan Commission, at their 7/23/2025 meeting, would have to hold a public hearing to consider the rezoning of land. This was brought by the developer with consent of all the owners of land being rezoned, and then the City Plan Commission will either give a favorable, negative, or neutral recommendation to the council. That is the same process that we have anytime we have a rezone. That is just an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. So that meeting has been scheduled. They have sent out notification to everybody as required by the City Plan Commission for the public hearing. It has been advertised in the newspaper, and that should occur on 7/23/2025. Assuming that they provide a favorable recommendation, well, they'll give a recommendation and then it will go before the council. Then the common council at the meeting on August 11th will receive the petition for annexation, the fiscal plan, a resolution to approve the fiscal plan, and the annexation ordinance. That is assuming that we receive all of those items from the developer. If we don't have the fiscal plan, then that can't move forward at that meeting, so there's a lot of nuts and bolts that have to happen before that would move forward anyway. The common council can either approve the resolution to approve the fiscal plan and hear the annexation ordinance on first reading, or can deny the petition. The common council will also receive the recommendation of the City Plan Commission, and you will have 90 days to take action on that. I would recommend, because we can't rezone land that is not in the city limits, we would need to not take any action on that until after the annexation ordinance had passed, which should occur within 90 days if you so choose to pass that. If no action is taken, then, and 90 days have passed, then that rezone will automatically be approved, but you will have the opportunity to either approve that, deny that, or take no action. If the common council at the 8/11/2025 meeting approves the resolution to approve the fiscal plan and hears the annexation ordinance on first reading, then the common council will have to have a public hearing on the annexation within 30 days, which, based on our publication deadlines, will occur either on September 10th or September 11th. That would have to be a special meeting that the council would have. After the public hearing on either September 10th or September 11th, the common council can adopt the annexation ordinance on second reading, but cannot do so not sooner than 14 days. So you have to wait 14 days after that public hearing to adopt that annexation ordinance. The earliest would be September 25th if the public hearing was on September 10th. If the common council. If the common council approves the annexation, then at the same meeting where the annexation is approved, the common council could also approve the rezoning if the council so chooses. The annexation would need to be approved first, and then the rezoning ordinance could then be approved at that time. So that's kind of the process, and I gave it all to you just so that way you kind of understand what will have to occur. And that's all assuming that all of the things line up the way that they potentially can, that everything moves forward as planned, that they do, in fact, get us the fiscal plan, that they do bring it to the August 11th meeting, all of those things. So if you have questions, I'm glad to answer them, but that's kind of what the process would look like. It's going to be a multi-step, multi-meeting process. It's not something that would be able to happen just like that.
My biggest concerns are, are they going to pay for all their own infrastructure? And when they're done, of course, if we were to go through with this, all the heavy equipment and stuff on the roads going in and out, are they repaving our roads when they're done? Are they, and what about health concerns when people live out there? Are they contaminating the groundwater? How much water are they going to need a day?
That's something you'd have to, yeah, that's something you'd have to talk to the developer about. We certainly could put in the annexation ordinance that they're responsible for repairs to any streets that are damaged, that they're responsible for infrastructure and paying for that. That can all be included in that, but that would be something that would have to be negotiated with the developer. So I cannot answer those questions, but they are things that could be discussed.
There's a developer here.
Not tonight, because this meeting, there wasn't really any action for the council to take. I was mostly bringing this to your attention so that next meeting, if things are moving forward, you aren't blindsided by something this big. I wanted you to be aware, so you have the opportunity to ask questions of the developer or me if you have any questions.
And it gives us timeline.
Yes, yes, then you have an idea of what to expect, yep.
I have a feeling there'll be a lot of questions to them.
And two.
And I wouldn't be in favor unless I got all the answers, and they were good answers. So.
So Alicia, when they come in August 11th with those things, that would be the council's opportunity at that time, whether you want to approve the fiscal plan and also the annexation ordinance, correct?
On first reading only, yes.
First reading.
Or you could deny it. So, you know, my recommendation would be that they would come to that meeting, just so that you do have an opportunity to ask them questions. But yes, once that petition comes, there's certain action that has to be taken within that timeframe per state statute. So if you are going to approve it, it does have to have that public hearing within thirty days in order to move forward with it, per state statute.
I know there's got a lot of questions I'm going to have to answer, so.
So at the City Plan Commission meeting, will people be allowed to have questions or concerns?
Yes, yes. So that is, the City Plan Commission meeting has a public hearing associated with it. So any person who wants to come and speak at the public hearing may do so. Depending on the number of people, the Plan Commission is allowed to limit the amount of time that each person speaks. So if there are a lot of people, that will probably occur, but you can come. If you can't attend the meeting, then you can submit a written statement to the Building Services Office as well. And that can then be read for the Plan Commission if you can't attend in person. But yes, there will be a public hearing, and that was published in the newspaper.
And I believe the landowners have been.
Yes, so there are, in state statute, there's a certain number of landowners that need to be notified. They have been sent notice directly. So it was published in the newspaper, and then they also received notice if they live in a certain area.
Do I have any other questions, concerns?
We all have our hands to look up. Sounds like we all have our hands we have to consider and look up, so.
Okay, Kimberly, do you have a couple more things for us under new business? Is I correct?
First, I just want to make sure that you all are aware the fire station, for Station Four, groundbreaking is July 24th at 10:30 in the morning. So we'd love to have everyone out there. And then the second thing, Alicia, you're on the docket again, sorry. Okay. The request for qualification to move forward with the OKRA grant, these did not make it in your packet, but to be able to advertise, to get bids for a potential plan, comp plan.
Yeah, so we were working with NICRP.
Yes.
Is that the right letters? Some of those letters. They were helping us with the grant. And so we, they reached out to me, and I drafted a request for qualifications that will be published. So that way, we can get some proposals to do the planning grant through OKRA for our
comprehensive plan. OKRA is supposed to review that request for qualifications. We already had the NICRP review it, and they made some changes.
And so I've been working with them to make sure that we're meeting whatever they believe we need to have in there for OKRA. And then they were submitting it to OKRA to get their approval before we went ahead and published it. In order to keep with our timeline to get that grant, we are seeking approval to go ahead and move forward with that request for qualifications once OKRA has approved it, and asking that you authorize us to make any changes that OKRA recommends. My understanding is that if you don't do it the way OKRA wants it to be done, you will not get the grant. So we need to, once we find out if OKRA has any changes, we will need to make those, or else our chances are not very good for that.
That would be correct.
Do I have any other questions?
As far as the open house on that, or the groundbreaking on the 24th, I'll be up in town getting ready for the hot dog festival. I won't be able to make it.
That's okay.
It's on the 24th. We start early in the morning.
Oh, shoot, I forgot about that. That will be that thing, yes.
Yeah, 25th and 26th.
Yeah.
Early that afternoon is Megan Sheed sisters' celebration of life.
That's right, that, isn't it? Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
24th will be a busy day.
Yep, that'll be busy.
Do you need me for anything else, Alicia?
No, does anybody have any questions?
So we do have a work session after this, so whenever, if you're ready to.
I do just need the council to approve that RFQ so that we can get it published and authorize us to make any changes that OKRA suggests.
So moved.
Thank you.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Steve Beardsley.
Aye.